In this folder should have a resume.
I see.
Yes, her resume.
Good evening. Thank you. It is Monday, August 9th. This is the Guilford Board of Education. There is a huge crowd here tonight. We thank you all for coming. I see you all have masks, which is terrific. It is not only respectful of the in-school acknowledgement of masks that we have been following all summer, but I am guessing, as you know, our first selectment has now required masking in all of our public buildings in town. I will just note, I will note that each Board of Ed member, when they are speaking, or Dr. Freeman, we will take our mask off. That's in order for all of you to hear us. We want to make sure that you're hearing us, and then we will put it back on. All right, so welcome tonight to the Guilford Board of Education meeting, again, August 9th. The first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance, and I welcome you to join us in that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. The first order of business is action on the minutes of July 12th. Is there a motion to approve the July 12th meeting minutes?
Second.
All right, I've heard a motion and a second. Are there any comments or corrections on these minutes? I do have a couple of corrections, if I may. This is 10 pages of minutes, so the fact that there is a request for a correction is not surprising at all. Terry is doing a magnificent job keeping up with us. On page two, the very first paragraph, the last sentence of that paragraph states that she has also submitted a petition. The correction is that noted that she has a petition to submit. We have not received a petition. The second correction I would like to suggest on that page is under number five, the review and approval of expenditures. The second paragraph indicates both that Mr. Delventura, oh, I'm sorry, that the section notes that Mr. Delventura proved the minutes, but the second paragraph notes Joe Galino, and I think that needs to be corrected to John Delventura.
That's correct, yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you. On page four, this is, I think, a very small correction, under 9.4. The last paragraph, I just want to align the bid amount as stated above it, which I think is $102,271.60. On page eight, under the, on the paragraph that starts Dr. Balistraci, encouraged, instead of all community members, please any parent to talk to their students' teachers, and then add if they have questions about work being done in the classroom, because that is an appropriate action for a parent. And then the last sentence, Mr. Marzano agreed to meet, to change that to suggested a meeting, because there was no meeting identified. Sorry, two more, thank you for your patience. On page nine, fourth paragraph down, Dr. Balistraci noted that if, it should say, any child is attacked or bullied, this should be dealt with by the administration, will be taken seriously, and will not be tolerated. Obviously, if any of my colleagues are disagreeing with any of these.
Yes, well done.
Okay. And then finally, on page 10, the last paragraph about halfway through, the initiative is not meant to put any individual down, but is to recognize all students regardless of race, religion, or sexual identity, which is, I believe, what was said at the meeting. Thank you, that was a long list. Any other corrections noted by any of my colleagues? All right, so then we have a motion and a second. I'm going to ask to call a vote on the meeting minutes as amended. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstentions.
Okay, so that is unanimous, thank you. All right. The next item on the agenda is public forum, four topics on the board agenda only. I will just note the reason for that caveat that comes at this point in the agenda. Per state statute, we as a Board of Ed always have to post our meetings, the meeting agendas ahead of time, so that the community knows what we are going to discuss. So that while there is an opportunity at the end of the meeting to, for the public to ask a question or make a comment, the board is really only supposed to be discussing matters on the agenda. So that if there's a member of the public here tonight who would like to make a comment about anything on the agenda, they are welcome to come up and do so now. I ask that if you do, you come up and state your name and your address for the record. There is a pad on the podium here that will also allow you to write it down. It helps a lot with taking meeting minutes. So, again, is there anyone who would like to address the board about topics on the agenda at this time? All right, seeing none, we're going to go on to the next item, which is review and approval expenditures for the month of July 2021. This will actually come in two parts. There will be review of the July expenditures as they relate to the final financial reports for 2020, 2021 academic year, and then likewise, July financials as they relate to the 2019, wait, 2021, 2022 year, getting all my numbers confused. So, Mr. Sands, I'm going to turn this over to you now, please.
Okay. Well, let's turn our attention first to the July financials as it relates to the fiscal year that just ended, which is the fiscal year of 2020, 2021. Our fiscal year ends on June 30th, so July of the following month is usually our cleanup, and we use that time to go after vendors who have not submitted things, have not submitted paperwork, and things of that sort. Expenditures for the month were 7,001, 701, 902, 73. And expenditures and encumbrances through the end of July were 99.93% of the budget as compared to 99.58% last year. In July of this year, we received a small amount, $37,000 from Medicaid. That was the only income. There were some budget transfers, which we will talk about later. And the warrants for the year, I mean, for the month, were $773,698.19. There wasn't anything particularly unusual in the warrants. As I say, this was mostly just cleanup stuff that people were slow in submitting for the fiscal year. So I would propose that we accept the results for July of 2021 as it relates to the fiscal year 2020, 21.
All right, so that is a motion to approve the July 2021 financials for the fiscal year 2020, 2021. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? I will note that we did discuss the financials and the warrant in some detail in our Operations Committee meeting just prior to this meeting. I also just want to note for the public, we did note this at our last meeting, but I would like to note again, with great, a great deal of appreciation to the Guilford Public Schools Administration, and specifically to our Business Director, Mrs. Trudeau, that despite many, many, many dollars spent on COVID expenses over the last year to keep our children safe, and to support the kind of remote and hybrid learning that we had to do, that we managed to come into the end of the school year without having to seek a special appropriation from the Board of Finance. I will tell you, as the Board Chair, I spent a good part of the fall and into the spring expecting, in fact, to have to do that. So it is a tremendous success financially for the Administration and our Business Director to be landing here. That being said, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the July 2021 financials for fiscal year 2020, 21? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? All right, that is unanimous. So, Mr. Sands, I'm going to turn back to you for the next piece of this report.
All right, the second part also relates to the month of July 2021, but this is, this covers expenditures and encumbrances for the 2021, 22 fiscal year, which started July 1. The expenditures for July were $3,477,073.89. Expenditures and encumbrances, that means what we spent and what we put onto the warrants, which are things that have been approved for payment but haven't been paid, were 7.75% of the budget as compared to 7.14% in the prior year. Revenue for July was $5,478 from the pre-K program. We don't normally get much revenue when school is not in session like this. And the warrants totaled $1,539,531.45. The biggest item in there was a payment to the town for the medical expenses for the month of July, which were almost a million dollars. So that's why the warrants are at that level. So I would make a motion that we approve the financials for July of 2021 as it relates to the 2021, 22 fiscal year.
All right, terrific, that's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any further comments? This also was discussed in some detail in our Operations Committee meeting just prior to this meeting. No additional comments? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? All right, so that is approved. Next item on the agenda is communications. Does any board member want to note communications received in the last month?
Madam Chair, I have a communication I'd like to include for the record.
Okay.
On top of the multiple emails we as a board receive on a daily basis for the support of the programs here at the school, I wanted to make sure that Ms. Leslie Gillong, her letter directed, directed to me, in my home address, gets entered in, expressing her full support on all that we do on behalf of all the children in Guilford. So I want to submit this for the record.
Okay, thank you. Any other communications? I will note that the board in the last month has received from the Sustainable Guilford Task Force an email in support of the equity and social justice work. Likewise, we received a statement from SEPTO, which is the-
Special Education Parent Teacher Organization.
Thank you, Parent Teacher Organization, also in support of this work. I will say to my colleagues, I need to forward them, we have received, as Mr. Galino noted, a number of emails over the last month in support of this work. We also have received a number through the Guilford Public Schools email, which comes through the website.
Yeah, I believe I forwarded 10 or a dozen emails to board members generally through Friday to this morning that were coming into the website address that I've been forwarding to each of you as those come in.
Okay. We have also received a couple of emails from folks who have been concerned with the approach we've taken. But again, I counted 31 in favor. And then I also just wanted to note, as, as we expect as we head towards this year, we've had a couple of questions regarding masking that we are waiting to determine that. We need to get guidance from the state. And some, just some questions about the approach in general to instruction, as there is some, I think, growing concern around the Delta variant. And the Administration is, is paying very close attention to all the, all the state communications and regulations that we'll have to follow as we get closer to the year. But I just wanted to mention those. All right, there are no student representatives over the summer. We will probably see them in September, October, so we will pass on that item. And I'll now turn it over to Dr. Freeman for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Balistraci. For the first item under my report, I'm going to ask Mr. Bowden to join us at the table to provide an update on summer hiring and vacancies that we can anticipate as the school year opens.
Good evening.
Hi.
I'm first going to start off by highlighting the numbers of hires in certain bargaining units. We have currently one opening in the Administrative Union, which we hope to have filled, filled tonight. Obviously, the principal at AW Cox. We have hired since the end of last school year 13 teachers into the district. We've hired three administrative assistants into the district. We've also hired 13 paraprofessionals into the district, and one nurse, as well as seven employees in our dining services program. So we've had a busy several weeks here. We had a number of resignations and retirements, people that have either retired or decided to find a job closer to home. So we had a number of openings, as you can see. That being said, we still have some openings to fill in the remaining summer weeks. Our principals and our directors are currently in the hiring process, so as I speak to you tonight, don't assume that these will be open for long. Our hope is they will be filled at, by the end of this week, or certainly the end of next week. But I'll highlight a few of these. Currently, at AW Cox, we have two long-term subpositions that we need to fill. At Guilford High School, we have a long-term substitute position in English and a part-time French position that we need to fill. At Adams Middle School, Mr. Regan is in the process of hiring a choral music teacher, music teacher for orchestra and general music, which is a combined position, and an art teacher for grades seven and eight. Pupil Services is in the process of hiring an ELL teacher, two long-term subs, one as a special education teacher, and one as a speech and language pathologist. And last but not least, we have an opening for a school social worker that would be a district-wide position to serve throughout the district. Currently, we also have two openings in dining service. We have five more pairs to hire, and two more, two more nurses, and one custodian. So even though we've done a lot since the end of the school year, we still have some work to do before we open our doors to our students, but I have every bit of confidence that we, we will have these positions filled with capable people and high-quality people, and that they'll be ready to serve our students and our community in due time.
We'll update this report for you at your September meeting and anticipate that there will be few, if any, vacancies left at that time.
Terrific.
Any questions?
You said the dining services was two positions.
Two positions you had to fill. Mrs. Calabro has filled seven of the nine. She hopes to have those two filled this week.
And I'm going to take advantage of the crowd we have tonight and note that not on the report, but important to principals, there are also going to be lunch and recess aid positions that we will be looking to fill, and those are easiest filled when we can reach out to local community members. So I know principals will be looking to fill those positions as well.
Thank you for mentioning that, Dr. Freeman, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Bowden.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
I also wanted to update the board and the community. This year, as has been our tradition, we will be holding an administrative leadership retreat next week. We will be meeting in person. We will be meeting at Parmley Farms in Killingworth, which has turned out to be a location that has really worked well. It is a completely outdoor location, but it is completely covered and protected from the elements, and so we will be having a two-day retreat. All of our central office leadership positions, principal positions, assistant principals, building leadership, and many of our director positions will be together for those two days. Over the course of those two days, we're going to be doing some work on mindfulness, focusing on ourselves as a leadership team, and looking at some mindfulness practices to pay a little attention to our own social and emotional wellness as we begin those two days. And I'm really happy to say that Jill Lojeroman and Maya Schofield from Cox Elementary School will be the experts coming in to help us, the school leaders, think about our own mindfulness and our own social, emotional wellness as we move into the retreat. We're also going to be having Dr. Richard Lemmons from the Connecticut Center for School Change. And the real content deep dive of the retreat will be focusing on the acceleration work that Dr. Crystal has shared with you guys previously this year. Our focus next year, as we come out of this pandemic, will be to be accelerating instruction out of the pandemic, not remediating out of this pandemic. Dr. Lemmons is going to be spending a significant amount of the retreat time working with our leadership team around that work. We are also part of a network through the Connecticut Center of School Change. We will be working with Dr. Lemmons and five other school districts across the state across the year as we move beyond this pandemic. Additionally, we're going to be spending some time talking with the principals about the structures and the systems in place for the Family Equity Liaison, to be able to meet the staff in the schools and to reach out to the communities, so that the families and the students for whom that person is being brought in know how to access that person, and we'll be working on those structures. We're going to be spending some time talking about COVID mitigation strategies and the nuts and bolts and logistics about how that will affect this school year moving forward. The, the picture and the landscape are different than they were in June when we closed schools. We're going to be opening a little differently than we anticipated even just a few weeks ago, so we're going to be spending some time having that conversation, and we're going to be wrapping that time together by looking at our portrait of the graduate work. I'm sure the board recalls that we were talking about revising our portrait of the graduate. What do we expect of the students who leave Guilford schools with 13 years of our schooling behind them? We had just begun to sort of dig into that work. We put it on hold as the pandemic hit. We will be having some folks from Batel Ed 21 coming to join us to really begin working on, on reviving that portrait of the graduate work, so that as a community, we have a shared understanding of what we expect of and for our graduates as they come together, or as they finish their schooling with us. We're really excited. We're excited to be able to have this time. Last year, the retreat was tremendously impacted. We get a lot of good learning done, and we get a lot of good work done for the school system by pulling those 21 core leaders together. It's the only time that we have that kind of time together, and for what it's worth, the space at Parmley Farm is really reasonably priced, so it turns out to be a really inexpensive retreat, an opportunity to spend that time together. I also want to give an update, such as it is, about our mitigation strategies as we move into next year. Specifically, I want to be able to talk about the two mitigation strategies that we know will have the biggest impact and will do the most to keep our students safe next year, that being vaccines and masks. I want to talk about what that looks like for next year, and then I also want to talk about distance learning and what those realities will look like for next year. And the fact is that as we sit here tonight, we do not have final or solid guidance on any of those three items. The landscape is changing across the country and across the state, and right now, Connecticut State Department of Education, Connecticut Department of Public Health, and the Governor's Office are all looking at those items and promising more guidance to come out soon. So let me start with vaccines. We know that vaccines are the best frontline of protection that we have. In the Guilford Public Schools and in the Guilford community, we have a really high level of, of complete vaccinations. I believe that our staff members in the Guilford schools are somewhere between 95 and 99% fully vaccinated at this time. We know that we've had good uptake of vaccines across the community, and we know that our students who are old enough to receive vaccines have participated, and, and we believe that we have a high level of vaccination among our student body as well. We hosted two public vaccine events here in Guilford recently, at the National Night Out that the Guilford Police Department hosted, and one that we offered on school property. And we had some of the highest rates of participation in those vaccine clinics for any school district up or down the shoreline in the shoreline region. The more students in our schools, adults in our schools, and community members who surround our children who, who are fully vaccinated, the more protected our schools will be, and the lower the rate of, of infections we will have, therefore, the lower rate of impact on instruction. And so, again, I just want to encourage all community members to, to consider vaccination, talk to your own doctors, and when possible, consider vaccinations for your students, because it's the best way to keep them safe as we open schools to full, five-day-a-week in-person learning. That being said, the next most effective line of defense that we have are masks. At this moment, as we sit here tonight, the Governor's mask mandate stays in effect until September 30th. So as of today, if nothing changed, we would have a mask mandate for all students and all adults in our schools in place until September 30th. I do not know if the Governor is going to modify that mandate, and if so, we don't know in what direction the Governor will modify that mandate. There has been suggestions that September 30th may be extended to a later date. There have also been suggestions that the mandate may be released, and that there may be a recommendation from CDC and Connecticut DPH to continue masking in our schools. We will continue to be part of the conversation at the state level, and we will follow any mandates, and I want to suggest tonight that we will follow any recommendations around masking that come from our state medical experts. We are continuing to meet with our local medical officials and advisors. We met with our team last week. We have another meeting scheduled tomorrow. I know that parents want to know what will happen in schools for their students on September 7th. And again, what we know today is that if nothing changed, all students on September 7th would be required to wear masks because of the Governor's mandate. If that changes, we will continue to get communications out to our community, but that is the expectation at this moment in time. That is masked while in school. At recess, students will be allowed to remove their masks. For outside activities, students will be allowed to remove their masks. We will continue mask breaks outdoors. At this moment in time, when we think about the distance learning platform that we had in place last year, that has changed as well. The state is not requiring schools to provide a full distance learning option for families who are uncomfortable with full in-person schooling at this time. Additionally, the school district is no longer allowed to count a fully district-wide or school-wide distance learning day as a day of school. What that means at this moment in time is that if we were to call a snow day on September 8th, we would not be able to have distance learning, we would not be able to count a day of school. If we are to miss a day of school because of weather, or emergency, or other- If we are to miss a day of school because of weather or emergency or other scheduling impacts, that day of school would need to be rescheduled at the end of the school year after the last day currently scheduled in June. Additionally, the state is suggesting that we may and should continue to provide distance learning on an individual basis, an individual-as-needed basis, for students who may be impacted by COVID. So in our youngest grades, for our students who are younger than 12 years old, we do expect that we will have some COVID positivity in the community. If a student is unable to attend school because they are isolating related to COVID, it appears now that the state will expect us to continue to provide uninterrupted schooling through live streaming of what takes place in a classroom or another distance learning opportunity. That consideration will not apply to non-COVID-related absences. So students who are absent for other illnesses or families who take vacation may not avail themselves of a distance learning platform. It would be provided on an as-needed basis for COVID-related absences. We believe at this time that that would include students who may continue to be identified as close contacts and therefore required to isolate even though they themselves may not be positive for COVID. Mr. Bowden attended a meeting at 9 o'clock this morning, and again, the message was there will be more guidance coming, there will be more specific guidance coming. We hoped that this year would be more stable, would be more predictable than last year, but with the rising number of positives related to the Delta variant, it appears that the opening of this year is going to be a moving target in some ways, the way the opening of last year was. We will continue to push communications out to the community as soon as we have certainty on these items, again, vaccinations, masks in school, and then the distance learning opportunities that will be provided. The good news here is that we are opening five full days a week for in-person learning, and we learned last year that with the masking protocols in place in the schools, very little, if any, of the transmission in Guilford of the COVID virus was related to students in schools. We had very few cases where we could clearly see that one student seemed to be the source of the infection for another student. In fact, in most cases, it was clear that students who were infected brought that from outside activities, and when we isolated or quarantined those classrooms, we didn't see second or third positives popping up within that cohort of students. That told us that what we were doing in the schools was working. We firmly believe that with the prevalence of fully vaccinated folks in our schools and in this community, and with the continuation of the mask mandate, that we can have safe five days a week, full days of schooling in our Guilford public schools. I want to encourage everybody in town to be sure that your students are taking advantage of that opportunity. If the schools were not safe, we would not be opening them. That said, I sincerely hope that in short order, we will be able to move away from the mask requirement and see our students smiling, not behind a mask, but to be able to see our students unobstructed smiles in the classrooms. But that appears to be some way off, and we will continue to monitor the directives from Hartford and the advice and recommendations from health experts as we move forward. I wish we had a final statement. We had hoped to be issuing a very clear final statement tonight, followed by a clear communication to our parents tomorrow, but right now, all of these three big pieces continue to be developing, and we'll only be able to tell you once Hartford makes more final decisions or recommendations.
Excellent. Questions? Yeah, go ahead, Kristen.
Can you comment on the other measures that we had in place last year, like the Plexiglas and socially, like staying six feet apart? I don't know if it's too early for you to comment on that, but are we going to kind of get any of it back?
What we're hearing, what we're hearing from the CDC, what we're hearing from state-level authorities, is that the most effective measures were the masks, that the masks were what made the difference. We are relaxing the strict cohorting at our elementary and Baldwin level. We will have students moving through the building again. Students last year spent most of their time in one space. They're going to be moving through the building again. We're going to be having lunches and cafeterias again. We're going to be going outside for recess. We're going to be relaxing most of those other protocols because with the high level of vaccination in our community and with the continuation of the mask mandate, for however long that appears to be, those were the mitigating, those were the mitigation strategies that had the greatest impact. The studies are telling us that all the Plexiglas we put in place didn't really do a lot. I think it helped people to feel comfortable, but it didn't seem to make a difference. We will continue to encourage people to practice proper hand hygiene and cough and sneeze hygiene. We will continue to clean high-touch surfaces as frequently as we can during the school day. We will encourage parents to keep children home if they are showing any signs or symptoms of any illness. All of that good stuff continues to be good stuff, but again, it really appears to be the vaccine uptake level and the masks that are going to be making the biggest difference for us. You may see continued Plexiglas here at the high school during the lunch waves. I don't think it hurts. I think it may help some folks to feel comfortable to be sitting across from somebody while eating and unmasked, but we don't believe, the science isn't showing us that it's had a big effect.
Just had a couple of questions, well, one statement and one question. It just, even though we may wish it was different, I just wanted to sort of reinforce that it's the decisions for masking and everything is coming from the state and coming from the health director in Guilford, and that unfortunately, fortunately or unfortunately, the board does not have a lot to say about that. Is that correct?
That is, and in fact, thank you for bringing that up, Mrs. Sullivan. I have asked for a legal opinion. If the governor retreats from a mandate statewide and we end up receiving only a recommendation or a strong recommendation for CDC and DPH, a number of other superintendents and I have requested a legal opinion about what would be the liability to the Board of Education if you had a recommendation from Connecticut DPH and the CDC to mask and we chose to do something other than that. I want this town and this board to be very aware of what our decision means, even if the mandate is released, but the appropriate experts are recommending a move in that direction, we need to make a decision with our eyes fully wide open, and so I assume that if it, again, if the mandate is dropped, I will have that guidance for you before we, as the administration, or we as the administration and the Board of Education, make a decision about that moving forward.
Okay, thank you. And do you anticipate, and I don't think you mentioned this already, but I apologize if you did, that we will have similar rules that we had as vaccination improved last year, that students and staff members that are considered close contacts that are fully vaccinated will be exempt from quarantine?
Yes, thank you again. Our understanding at this time is that if we identified a positive case at the high school, we would conduct close contact surveys the way we had. We'd look to see who that close contact to that person could have been. Anybody identified as a possible close contact who can confirm that he or she has been vaccinated would then not be required to isolate the way somebody who cannot confirm vaccination would be required to isolate. So obviously, our biggest impact is going to be at Baldwin and the elementary schools where our student population hasn't yet had the opportunity to be vaccinated. Yeah, it's a really good point. Even though we do expect there will be some positive cases and possibly some close contacts, anybody who has been fully vaccinated should be able to be excused from isolation related to that. And again, the answer we keep getting back is as long as they wear a mask when they do return to the school setting.
And my last question, sorry, everybody. Hopefully, this is some of your questions. You know, I understand we're starting in masks. That mitigates some of the usual kid illnesses that go around, but the reality is there are other illnesses besides COVID circulating in our lives, and I already, you know, hear a bunch of people sniffles and sore throats that are, turn out to totally not be COVID. And so as we end in, or get into the cold and flu season and the later fall, masks or not, are the nurses and the health, you know, head of nursing in the schools starting to think about how they're going to address kids? Are we going to be, you know, are they thinking about COVID, you know, sending everyone home that has a runny nose, or is there any discussion about utilizing rapid COVID tests? Not just here, but just in, you know, education across the state?
Yes, those are conversations. There are conversations about large-scale testing at school sites across the state. That conversation's happening at a state level, and again, I mentioned that the health team and we are meeting tomorrow, and that's some of the conversation we're having. So again, we're encouraging everybody, if your child has any symptoms of illness, to keep them home, but we do expect that we'll have to have some sort of interaction with pediatricians, and if a child has a seasonally-induced allergy, we don't want that child to miss a long timeframe of school. So yes, we need to, and we will continue to have those conversations, and again, I don't have firm answers for you. We expect it to be in a slightly different place right now.
Dr. Freeman, what does the busing situation look like for families with multiple households?
So again, as we've suggested for school, we will be relaxing some of the mitigation strategies that we've been practicing on buses. One of the biggest, I think, logistical changes and most important changes for a number of families in this town is that households who, families who maintain two different Guilford residences will now be able to have the buses service students at multiple addresses in Guilford again. Last year, we really restricted, we tried to maintain cohorts on the school buses as we did in the classrooms. So every child in Guilford was afforded one bus route, and you could ride that route only. For families in Guilford who maintain two addresses, that was an enormous inconvenience and impact. Again, the idea, the expectation is that as long as all the students on the bus are wearing their masks, we should be able to have students cross-bus cohorts. Normally, this time of year, I would be out encouraging all Guilford parents to take advantage of the school buses, and don't worry about dropping your kids off in the mornings because that will ease traffic. We're not making that suggestion this year. If there are families who are still more comfortable driving their students to school rather than putting their students on the bus, that will only create more space on the buses, which will afford more social distancing for the students who do ride the buses, and we know that that will continue to create a traffic headache twice a day at each of our locations, but we think that is a reasonable trade-off. And so we're not encouraging actively students not to ride the bus, but we're not actively encouraging students to ride the bus. We are recognizing that that is a family decision, and it may take some time before bus ridership returns to what it was historically in Guilford. We understand that, and we actually agree that that's a positive move for some families.
And lastly, what does music offering look like for fifth graders and sixth graders this year?
We're going to be affording complete music offerings the way we have in the past. We will have full chorus and band and strings opportunities at Adams. Baldwin will be offering the full musical offerings that it offered in the past.
Dr. Freeman, on the topic of busing, is the only permitted change going to be for multi-household kids, or can kids also ride a bus home with a friend or take a bus to the rec center or anything else?
We do believe that we're going to be allowing bus passes in the afternoons as well, so that students who attend after-school activities and take a bus to some of those locations or to a caretaker after school, that we should be able to accommodate that as well. Again, we believe that if our students are masked on the bus, that is the most important safety precaution, and therefore, normal bus activity with masks at least for the opening of school.
So really, a lot of good news.
There really is. I mean, we are opening so much better than last year. It's just enormously apologetic about the need to wear the masks, but the masks are the most important protection that we have, and the masks are allowing us, with the administrative team, every time we have this conversation, I keep saying it's normal but with masks. We really are going back to a normal calendar, a normal school day, normal activities, as long as we hold on to the masks until we see what's going to happen with this Delta variant. That doesn't mean we may not need to become more restrictive if things don't get better with the Delta variant, but we are hopeful that as younger students are able to take on the vaccine and as we respond to this, that we should be better, not worse, as the year unfolds.
Can I answer my question, Dr. Freeman? With the normal offerings, including like after-school activities, sports, fall sports, everything is on schedule to commence?
Fall sports, yes.
Fall sports and after-school clubs?
A fall athletic program for sure. Clubs and activities, I think you may consider, you may continue to see some mix.
Okay.
Some of our clubs worked really well in a Zoom setting, and when we spoke with the board about some of the, some of the additional supports we're going to be offering students through the ESER grant, some of those will continue to be offered through Zoom or through a hybrid setting. So, you know, none of our athletic programs translate well to a Zoom setting, but some of our clubs might, and in some ways, you may see us taking advantage of some of those opportunities because in some places, they were good fits. But again, mostly normal with masks is what we anticipate that we will be seeing on September 7th.
Full, full athletic schedule.
A full schedule is what we're anticipating. Again, if things take a turn in the next eight to 10 days, you may see something different coming out of CIAC, but right now, CIAC, and again, what we've learned is outdoors, especially if you're vaccinated unmasked, is really safe. The recommendations are all now coming back to, regardless of your vaccine status, masked indoors is better, but outdoors, and again, at the high school level and even at the Adams level, where our students are engaged in the most rigorous athletic programs, is where we have the highest levels of student vaccination, obviously. Thank you.
Questions? I just want to note, you just apologized for the news of masking. The public health professional in me just needs to remind people that it's frustrating that masking can be without our youngest students vaccinated. We really need to think carefully about their safety, and I think we know from a public health standpoint that kids in general are at lower risk for serious disease, but it is not zero. And, you know, as a community, we need to do what's right by the health and safety of our kids. So, and I will then transition briefly to thank our Director of Health in Guilford and our Medical Consultant, who were very, very, very busy people with us last year, hopefully will be less busy people with us this year, but we will continue to seek their guidance as well.
And both will be with us tomorrow, so their schedule hasn't slowed down yet, but we hope that it will slow down for them.
Excellent.
And Dr. Balstracy, before we, before I conclude my report, if I may, one item that's not on the agenda, I was not here with you when you met as a board last time. I just want to extend my sincere appreciation for the board extending my contract. I cannot tell you and this community how excited and committed I continue to be to continue to do the work for three more years in Guilford. I am the luckiest superintendent in the state. Thank you very much.
I guess I don't have to add anything to that. I will, I had an opportunity, Dr. Freeman and I were asked to speak briefly at Connecticut Association of Boards of Education Summer Leadership Program on Thursday, and in our introductions, I did have the opportunity to say to this group of Board of Education members across the state and superintendents across the state, that we in Guilford have had Dr. Freeman with us now 10 years. That is a very long duration for a superintendent, and I cannot underscore enough what it means to have the combination of strong leadership and longevity in the stability of a school system and a district. So.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your report, and we certainly look forward to hearing more, and as you stated, more will be communicated as soon as we know. Board agenda, we are now at 9.1. Personnel items. All right, we have been asked to ratify the resignation of the following teachers. Sarah Burke, Special Education, seven years of service in Guilford Jones Elementary School. Shannon Duggan, Adams Middle School Teacher, art, one year of service. And Julie Swanson, Cox Elementary School Spanish. And Julie Swanson, Cox Elementary School Spanish Teacher, four years of service. Is there a motion to ratify the resignation of these teachers?
No move.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposition or abstentions? All right. Please ratify the rescinding of the non-renewal of the following teacher.
Yeah, there's a lot of double negatives going on there. If I may, Mark Severino served very well with us last year here at the high school as a Spanish teacher. Because of budget and staffing changes, his position did not exist last year. We needed to non-renew him for strictly budgetary reasons. It was not a reflection of his performance. Related to another resignation on this list, we have the opportunity to bring Mark back into that position. There is a position open and available, and we couldn't be happier than to have him returning to that position. So we're asking that you rescind his non-renewal, which will allow him to continue to serve uninterrupted and successfully here at Guilford High School.
Wonderful. Is there, is there a motion? Mr. Galeno, second? Sorry, yes, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. And then lastly, we are asked to ratify the appointment of the following teachers. Emma Velez, Special Education at Leet Elementary School. Jamie Conklin, Guilford High School, PE and Health. Benjamin Moore, Guilford High School, Social Worker. Christina Tran, Adams Middle School, Chorus Music Teacher. And Catherine Jankura, Guilford High School, PE and Health. Is there a motion to ratify the appointment of these five teachers?
No move.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that is also unanimous. Terrific. 9.2 received for possible action, appointment of the AW Cox Elementary School Principal. I'm going to turn it over to you, Dr. Freeman.
Thank you, Dr. Balistraci. So we are very happy to be bringing a candidate forward to the Board of Education tonight and requesting your approval. At the end of the school year, when we learned that we would have a vacancy at AW Cox Elementary School, we posted and advertised for that position. We received over 50 applications for people who expressed interest in that principal position. These were all external candidates. At this time, there were no internal candidates who applied for that position. Mr. Bowden and I met in what we call snapshot interviews with approximately 20 of those candidates to extend the paper screening. We had enormously qualified candidates who were applying for this position. Considering the complexities of the COVID pandemic and considering the transitions that have occurred at Cox, we were really prioritizing experienced administrators, and we drew a number of sitting principals and really marquee school districts who were interested in moving to join the work here in Guilford Public Schools. We brought in five of those really qualified candidates. Those candidates met with a representative committee. That committee included Mr. Doug Hamel, representing the other principals throughout the district. Marva Rader represented the Board of Education on that committee. Teachers from AW Cox, Jill Lojeroman and Lindsay Fiorentino and Megan Lee, all volunteered their time in the summer to be part of those interviews. And Jessica Harrington served as a parent volunteer from the Cox community to be part of those interviews. From that full-day experience, we moved two finalists forward. Those finalists returned and were put through a performance-based interview. In that interview, we had this, we had the candidates' watching instruction in one of our Guilford classrooms. It was videotaped instruction. But we had the candidates' watching instruction, and we talked with them about what they saw and how they would work with that teacher, how they would respond to the instruction that they were seeing in the classroom. We provided them with a really dense piece of research around reading instruction and reading acquisition, and we grilled them on what they saw in that research. And there were some traps. There were some things in the paper that we didn't necessarily agree with. We didn't want somebody who could just read that paper and present it back to us. We were looking for folks who could really engage with that. And then we looked at some data sets. We provided some current data from this past school year, from Cox Elementary School specifically, and asked these candidates how they would engage with those data. What do those data tell them about the school that they want to lead moving forward? In that interview, Dr. Crystal and Mr. Scanziano from Central Office joined, and Mrs. Mandy Ryan, Principal at Lakes Elementary School, joined as well. I conducted, I conducted reference checking around, around this candidate that we're about to share with you. And I need to tell you that it was some of the most positive reference checks that I have received ever. The people that I spoke to who have worked with this individual are really upset that she's leaving their current district to come to Guilford. I had one of the reference checks tell me that this will be the best hire I've ever made. Now, we've hired some really good principals. That is a very high bar, but that is also really strong recommendation. It is therefore my pleasure to introduce to the board tonight Natalie Hammond. And Natalie, if I may, I'd like to ask you to come up and join the board at the table.
Hi, Natalie. Hi.
Board members, you have Natalie's resume and your materials in front of you. Natalie has four years of principal experience at the elementary level in an elementary school that's currently more than twice the size of AW Cox. She's currently principal in Eastern Reading, Region 9. And again, the folks there are really not happy that she's sitting here with all of them tonight. Natalie was an assistant principal for three years at the elementary level before taking that position, and prior to that, she was an elementary school teacher. We are really pleased that you're here with us tonight. Thank you for joining us, and I am very pleased to ask the board for your approval and to please help us name Natalie Principal at AW Cox this evening.
Terrific. Natalie, welcome. We've certainly done this many times before. I'm not sure that anyone has had quite the audience.
I know. This is a big interview.
That you have had. Welcome. We are, we're excited to talk to you. I do want to give Mrs. Rader a moment to speak, if I may, in a second, but I also want to give you an opportunity, I don't want to put you on the spot, but give you an opportunity at any point to say a few words if you would like to as well.
Sure. Thank you.
Natalie, so good to see you.
You too.
And thank you, Dr. Freeman, for inviting me to be part of the committee. It became very quickly apparent that you are really a shining star among our entire committee. You bring a warmth and an intention to your role as a principal and a passion that's very special and unique. I think you can empathize with what we've all been through in the last year and a half and understand the importance of resiliency and empathy and open communication. I know that's something that the Cox community was really emphasizing in their feedback and what they wanted in a principal. But most importantly, you really seemed excited and invigorated to join our community. I had four children go through Cox. It's a very special community for me personally, and I think if you spoke to any parent or staff at the school, they would say the same thing. And I really got the sense that you understood what you were coming into and were ready to embrace it. So I'm so thrilled you're here. I'm thrilled you've accepted the position and never hesitate to reach out for support or guidance from anybody in this district because you're entering a really wonderful community.
Thank you so much. Very kind words. Thank you for having me, and I feel like this is like my whole interview committee. Thank you. This is, this is amazing. Like I said in my goodbye letter to my current district, and I'm saying hello to you, I do take community very seriously. I take positivity and laying that foundation of really creating a positive learning environment as absolutely a priority. So I'm thrilled that you saw that in the interview because that really is something that I hold very near and dear to the work I do every day with children and with staff and with families. I knew from the first time I met Dr. Freeman, when we met, I just felt what I even felt tonight as people were coming in, the warmth of the community and just, I mean, to see this many people here supporting and the round of applause you received, this is where I need to be. I felt it during the first interview, the second interview even more, and on the third, I drove home just keeping my fingers crossed, but making sure I was watching I-95 traffic. I cannot thank you enough for giving me this opportunity. I am beyond excited, and yes, we are in the middle of August, but I am going to do my best to ensure, as my letters go out tomorrow morning, I'm so excited that some staff members and fellow administrators have joined tonight, and we have some parents here tonight. I'm excited to introduce myself and welcome myself to the community. And yes, we only have a couple of weeks to do that, but I am very confident that we are going to, as he shared. I feel already welcomed in and part of the administrative team, so look forward to the administrative work we're going to do next week as we really hit the ground running and get these schools open and get these beautiful children back in the building.
And Natalie just reminded me, anticipating the board's approval tonight and with your approval, should we receive it tonight, Natalie's current school district and superintendent have been enormously gracious in working with us. She has been made available to join the administrative team for both days of retreat next week, and we have scheduled a first day on-ground in Cox Elementary School of August 23rd with your approval. So enormous appreciation to ER 9 for working with us and recognizing the importance of having a new principal in her school in order to open it on time and open it properly in September.
They didn't have to do that.
They did not have to do that. We owe an enormous debt of gratitude to ER 9 for working with our schedule and understanding the importance to the Cox community. Absolutely.
Natalie, if you don't mind, we may have a board member too who would just like to ask you a question or two if we could and learn a little bit more about you. So I want to open to my colleagues, if you'd like.
Hi, welcome. So glad you're here. I noticed in your vision statement, a strong statement about social-emotional learning, and I was hoping you could talk to us about the importance of social-emotional learning, specifically on education, why, you know, why it's beneficial.
Absolutely. So yeah, this is absolutely my passion. To me, for not only the children, but the adults in the building, there has to be that positive climate, that positive community that people come into. Research shows, and it's just pretty evident, when we feel good about what we do and we feel good about where we come into each and every day, and we feel supported and valued and trusted and loved and cared for, we tend to do better at the work we do each day. And that's how our children respond to. And so I've often been asked, well, when do you do social-emotional learning? And it's not when, it's how we do it, and it's every single day. It's walking in with that, with that positive attitude and that growth mindset and that ability to think positively about the day ahead. We all come to work every day with things on our mind and situations that we're handling, but for us to come in and support the students and the families in the way that we know best. And then my job as the principal, I need to ensure that my staff feels the same way. So I am really big on creating those relationships and building that foundation so that the staff too feel safe and comfortable, willing to take risks, willing to ask questions, willing to engage in conversation, and always knowing that they're going to be able to trust in engaging in those conversations with me. So really, it's not one program or one resource. It's really how it's done, and it's every day, all day. It's talking the talk, it's walking the walk, it's ensuring that we are sticking to those values of making sure that when the children and staff and families come into that building or any of the buildings in the district, that it is a positive, fun community to come into, to learn and grow.
Thank you. Other questions from other board members? Oh, I'm sorry, thank you, Ted.
As you look at the start of the school year, as Dr. Freeman has indicated, this isn't going to be a normal start, although it's hopefully going to be a lot better than last year. But what particular issues do you see as the principal of an elementary school with, you know, students not being vaccinated? What particular issues do you see about opening up?
So I remember, Dr. Freeman and I spoke about this too. I am so excited to meet the families, and we're doing it outside because I want to see those children and I want them to see me. So again, I mentioned with the SEL piece, relationship building is going to be huge so that even when these little tiny friends come in with their masks on, and last year at this time, we were all saying, oh, my gosh, there's no way children are going to keep their masks. They are amazing. They do it, they, they're compliant, and it's not done like, oh, okay, I'll put it on. They have gone through the process with us. So for our newest friends coming in, recognizing that there is a human being under that mask is really important. We had, a lot of our staff wore pins with their pictures on it last year. We all had the lanyards on to ensure that the kids could really see who the adults are behind, especially for our newest five-year-olds, four- and five-year-olds coming into kindergarten. And ensuring that the protocols that are in place, that were in place last year that worked, and I noticed Dr. Freeman shared some things that we're going to be able to back up a little, constantly watching those. And that's me walking through the building, that's engaging in conversations with the staff. What's working? What do we need to do more? Where might we have some issues? And also, I know we talked about the social worker, ensuring that there are going to be, maybe be those worries that the children or the staff or the families have. And again, listening to those concerns. So some of the things that I think are going to be important, especially as the weather is nice before we have our three-foot blizzard, is making sure the children are getting outside, that they're able to, as Dr. Freeman mentioned, engaging in that play outside. I feel that the social interactions for our youngest friends are absolutely crucial, especially given the time that we, that they've had over the past year and a half. So I think that's going to be very important as they learn how to find each other and form and develop those relationships. And then again, walking the building every day. What is working? What's not working? What do we need to shore up? And engaging in conversation with my administrative colleagues, what are they doing in their buildings? If I see something that, that we might have a little bump in the road or there might be a question in the community. So again, I know we talked a lot about this during the interview process, but when we talk about things, we tend to be good problem solvers together. So I think engaging in the conversations with the board, with the administrators, with the families, with the staff, and with our littlest friends. Sometimes they have thoughts and ideas on their mind that we might not be thinking of, so important that we engage with them.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Hello, welcome.
Thank you.
I'm Amy.
Just a quick question. I think some of the things that make Guilford, or one of the things that makes Guilford so special, especially in the elementary schools, are the PTOs. They're very active. I enjoyed being on it. I know that they've brought things such as brand-new playgrounds to most of the schools, you know, they support teachers with school supplies and countless other things for the kids. And I note that you have something in your resume where you hosted conversations with the principals at your PTA here, but PTO meetings. Can you just comment a little bit about your relationship with PTOs?
Absolutely. So we met every two weeks. I met with the executive board. We would engage in conversations about what was coming up, programs that they were planning to run this past year just, of course, looked a little bit different. We didn't have as many of the in-person programs and opportunities, but we did some virtual, like Billy, Billy Bean, I think his name was, he came and met the kids virtually for an assembly. So we found creative ways to still have the kids engage in activities. So I did meet with them bi-weekly. We would go over plans. They did, you know, programs for diversity and equity from their perspective. They came in and they worked within the building to, again, bring those cultural programs to our school. And then the conversations with the principal every month at the PTA meeting. Two years ago, it was in the morning, and then in order for families to be able to join virtually, they did it in the evening this past year. I would join, and whatever was on our minds during that time, whether it was testing coming up or COVID protocols and things shifting and changing, or policies that have changed, or just giving kind of a root-cheer-cheer for everybody, I would always start off the meeting after the president opened up, and I would engage with families regarding kind of what the hot topics were at the time. So those were identified as conversations with the principals.
Thank you. You're welcome. Anybody else? Go ahead.
Hi, Natalie. John, I'm a proud graduate of AW Cox. Really, no, what I'm looking to learn is our incoming kindergarten, what is, what's going to be different when they graduate in fourth grade? What is your vision for Cox?
Again, I'm going to keep going back to the positive climate. I want those children to graduate and not only see me allowing them to transition up into the 5-6 school, but for them to say, I loved my elementary school experience. I loved being a child. I loved feeling valued. I loved feeling in a community where I could, as I shared before, take risks and engage in conversations with my friends and recognizing, and actually, if I may, if I may speak about it, the, when they showed me the video, I was amazed by the children in the video engaging in very polite, I'm going to call it debate, but it was, the children were engaging in a conversation about an article, and the children, you knew the community was a solid one, because the children would say, you know, I hear what you're saying, but I'm not sure that I, and we're talking fourth graders, engaging in this debate and this conversation. So children who feel comfortable and successful and proud of their So children who feel comfortable and successful and proud of their learning, and who look back and say, I loved being in that school for those five years. And I hope to bring them through, those friends who come in this year, I hope in five years to be there to do that stepping up, or graduation ceremony, whatever we call it at that fourth grade level in Guilford, to send them off and on their way and prepared to become more independent learners along the way. So yes, there is a little bit of that hand-holding and nurturing and getting them used to school at the very beginning, but really having them leave, leave as proud, independent, and successful and ready learners, ready to take on the middle school experience.
Anybody else?
Just a final question, and, and I think you've expressed it throughout a number of your answers tonight, but your leadership style, how would you briefly characterize your leadership style?
I'm going to start off with fair, I'm going to, and fun. I am in the hallways, I am with the children, I am in the cafeteria, I go out to the playground. I am down on the floor sitting crisscross applesauce. So one thing I will tell you, you will never see me unless I must, you'll never see me in a dress, because I am on the floor, I'm walking around. And yes, tonight I have heels on, but I normally have my flats on, because I want to be everywhere with the children. And with the staff, open. You know, I, and they'll see it when it's sent out tomorrow, but my letter's ready for tomorrow. I want an open door, I want them to come and talk, I want to get to know them as human beings, as they want me to know, I want them to know me as a human being. I'm a real person with a family and loved ones supporting me, just as they have, someone who is approachable. And again, fair and honest. I, I hope to be someone that families and students and staff can trust. I stick to my word, and I work hard. I, I definitely, I constantly, every day I get up and I'm excited about this opportunity. Every day I get up to, I'm okay with, we had this discussion, right Paul, the drive on 95, I'm okay with that, because I am that person who is prepping and brainstorming in the morning and debriefing and reflecting in the afternoon. So, and I will do that every day so I can come in. Again, I shared earlier, boots on the ground, ready to go that next day. You asked the question about that, that SEL piece, coming in with that positive and ready mindset each day. So there's a lot of words in there, but fair, I think fair and honest and very open, very, I think, easy to speak to and approachable, I think would be wonderful.
Well, thank you so much. This is, as someone, and I think most of us on the board have participated in principal interview committees, this is a rigorous process. So I am grateful for my colleague Moira and for the rest of the committee that went through this. I appreciate your willingness to answer additional questions, because we always love to hear more. And I am now going to ask for a motion to approve the hiring of Natalie Hammond as principal at Cox Elementary School. Is there a motion? So moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Welcome. Welcome to Guilford.
Thank you.
I'm going to interject and say, Natalie, Jason has contracts for you to sire. If you would please meet him, we want to move this as quickly as possible. Congratulations, Natalie.
All right. We have just a few more items to get through in the regular part of our agenda here. 9.3, we're being asked to act on budget transfers for 2020, 2021. As the year, financial year comes to a close.
Thank you.
One of the things we need to do is, is make sure that our, our budget lines are covered. So I am going to turn it over to Ms. Trudeau for a minute, if you'd like to explain a little bit about what we're going to be approving here tonight.
Thank you.
Yes, so our budget is broken up into seven categories normally, and we cannot have those seven categories be over budget. So what I am asking to do is, with the addition of the COVID expenses and operating transfers for dining services, we have nine categories of our budget. Currently, four of them are showing over budget. So I need to transfer funds to the following categories: employee benefits, capital, COVID expenses, and operating transfers. We're going to cover those overages from the remaining accounts and salaries, purchase services, tuition, supplies and materials, and transportation. And that will put our budget in line for the end of the year.
Terrific. So there will be a transfer of $1,653,000 from the five salary lines you just named into the four requiring these additional funds. Again, this is something we did cover in the operations committee meeting just prior to this, but I will turn to my colleagues if they have any remaining questions. Go ahead.
No, no, I was going to make, I was going to make a motion.
Oh, terrific. Even better. Wonderful.
I mean, we did, we did cover this extensively in the operations committee, and so I would, I would move to approve the budget transfers as outlined by Mrs. Trudeau.
Terrific. That's a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, terrific. Next item, 9.4, the special education transportation bid for 2020, 2021. So every year, there are a number of individual bus runs for our special education students. And these runs are bid individually. So these runs, we have a list of, it looks like approximately 16 to 20 runs in front of us. They, lowest bid is identified for each of them from one, two, three, it looks like three or four different bus companies.
Four different bids.
Terrific, thank you. The bus company that we contract with for our regular education runs, specialty transportation, does have the right of first refusal to these runs if they can meet the lowest bid that has been identified for the board following this work by the business office. Before we vote, is there anything I missed here, Mrs. Trudeau? All right, terrific.
I'd like to make one comment.
Sure.
It's important to note that these special ed bus runs are different from our regular bus runs in that the students often require additional support. In some cases, we're transporting a student in a wheelchair. In other cases, we're supporting, we're transporting a student who has to have a nurse along on the bus ride. I mean, there are various, very specific requirements, and a regular school bus doesn't do it for most of these to accommodate the needs of many of these students. So these are very specialized runs, and that's why we put them out to a set of companies who specialize in this kind of work and have that kind of specialized equipment.
All right. So I am going to ask a motion for the following, and I'm going to welcome Mrs. Trudeau if I misspeak at any point in this motion. I am going to ask for a motion for acknowledging specialty transportation's right to first refusal. We, the board, approve the award of the following lowest bidders for the special education runs identified conditional on specialty transportation's decision to meet that lowest bid. All right. Is there a motion?
Some move.
Second.
Second. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No abstentions. All right, so that is done.
Thank you, Linda.
Wonderful. Thank you. 9.5, to act on recommendations from the policy committee. I'm going to turn to Moira for this item.
Thank you, Dr. Ballastresi. Well, in both our policy committee meetings and in our previous meeting, I brought forth the following items for, to move forward and act on for the board. The first involves a policy number 5510, which is immunizations and vaccinations. Per Public Act 21-6, which was passed this past spring, it's an act concerning immunizations and repeals the non-medical exemptions in Connecticut. So this, this kind of goes into more detail. This is simply the policy that will, will adhere to that act. So I guess in terms of the technicalities of it, I would like to invite any of my board members to ask any questions or any clarifications.
Nobody? Okay, so just, just for the viewing community and for the people here, right, these, these are policies and regulations that were brought to the board last month.
Correct.
Which provides us a month to consider them, ask questions of our policy committee or administration. And so it sounds like we have no questions on this item.
And just important to note again, that this policy simply brings us into compliance with the new legislation related to school-based vaccinations. Yes.
Exactly. All right. So I am going to ask for a motion for the acceptance of policy 5510, immunizations and vaccinations as updated.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Did you?
Yeah, I'll go through. So item number 9.5.2 is the regulation 5510 for immunizations and vaccinations. This is a more in-detail regulation, kind of spells out the, the policy revisions and the regulation revisions, and the language that specifies, you know, kind of what has gone into effect as of last April. And I'll just read some brief language for the audience. Effective April 28, 2021, students in grades K through 12 with an existing immunization exemption based on religious grounds must have enrolled in schools in K through 12 on or before the law's effective date, and must have submitted a valid religious exemption prior to that effective date. But then it goes on to explain that students enrolled in pre-K as of April 27, 2021 at midnight, and present, who present a valid religious exemption to the school by that time at midnight, must then comply with this new immunization guideline and schedules as of September 1, 2022. So essentially, this new regulation is going to phase out the religious exemption as of September 1, 2022, but it's giving families a little bit of time with their youngest family members to bring their immunizations up to date, give them time to do so with the guidance of their health care providers, and then meet the state requirements.
Terrific. All right. So we've been asked to then approve regulation 5510, immunizations and vaccinations as updated by the policy committee per state regulation. Is there a motion?
Some move.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Terrific. Okay, and then one more.
Yep. Item number 9.5.3 is policy number 6411, which is about the planning and placement team PPT procedure. And this comes into play with any sort of special ed services that are sought out by a family of students in the district. And what this wants to spell out is again, I'll read the language, which is important. Students receiving special education services under the Individuals with Disabilities Act, IDEA, remain eligible for such services up until their 22nd birthday, or until they graduate from high school with a regular high school diploma, whichever comes first. And then it goes on to explain that, you know, the parents need to identify that with the district and what they would prefer. It used to be to the age of 21, but the IDA has recognized the need that some students may need beyond that age. And so it gives a little bit more time for the district to help with those services until they can transition to another program or their other needs.
All right. So we are being asked to approve policy number 6411, planning and placement team PPT procedures as updated by the policy committee. Is there a motion to approve this policy?
Some move. Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. That is unanimous. All right. Item number 10, reports of committees. The policy committee have anything else to report this evening?
No, just beyond that, our next meeting will be in late September, on September 27, 2021.
All right. Operations committee, Mr. Sands, is there anything else to report out of the operations committee meeting?
Yes. Three things. For the month, we had favorable medical expenses that were down from the previous month. So that was a pleasant surprise. We reviewed a very busy summer construction schedule where things are going, projects are being undertaken at every school in the, in the district. We are experiencing supply chain problems and delays in getting certain types of equipment. It's going to require the continuation of some of these projects into the start of the school year. However, I don't believe that any of these are going to affect the actual operation of the schools, but this has just been a difficult summer to get equipment and, and supplies. And finally, we met with the new dining services director, who is very experienced and has really hit the ground running. And we have agreed that we will have a continuation of the free breakfast and lunch program for the 2021, 22 fiscal year as we had this past year. So that, those were the highlights of the program.
Absolutely. Thank you. Curriculum instruction assessment committee, anything to report?
No, we haven't met since May, but we will meet again in October, October 25, 2021.
Terrific. Liaisons to town committees, any reports out of any of our town committees?
Nothing as it pretends to be.
Okay. No? All right. And lastly, liaison to the Learn Board of Directors.
No meetings in the summer, so we'll get back in September.
Wonderful. All right. All right. To our wonderfully present and very patient public who has joined us this evening, there is now an opportunity, if anyone wishes, to address the board with a public question or, or a comment. There is a limit per our bylaws of four minutes. We strongly ask that you respect that tonight, so that any, everyone who does want to say something has a chance to do so. I am just going to remind people to be respectful in their comments, remind people when they come up to give their name and address again, so that we can get that down for the minutes. And again, please note, there is, I believe, a pad on the podium to write that down as well. If you have a last name like Ballastresi, you really give minute makers, or minute, minute, minute meeting takers a run for their money. So again, I welcome anyone who would like to address the board to come up. I would actually like to say one more thing. Please note again that if you have questions, if you have comments, there's certainly things that we can get back to you on, but we again, want to make sure that this is a time that we're listening to people. So we're not going to spend a lot of time providing a lot of answers, particularly those that are going to require us to look into anything and get back to you, but we'll absolutely follow up. So again, if anyone would like to come forward, we invite you to do so.
Can I remove this?
Yes, you may. While you're speaking, go right ahead. Thank you.
I read the article in the Courier earlier this week, and I was really disturbed about the, I'm sorry, my name is Nate Pollock, and I live at 106 Russett Drive.
Wonderful, thank you.
And I wanted to, I work at a church in Westport, Connecticut, a Unitarian church, and I'm the director of religious education for children and youth. And it's my value and my life's goal and also my work to teach my, the children that are under my responsibility about diversity and being kind to others. And I just wanted to point out to all of us that, who like me, have white skin, that, well, I know that the, the issue is here about racism, but I wanted to just, if you would humor me, show you that racism does exist. And I, I went to the Big Y Guilford Shopping Center today, and I bought Band-Aids. They really only come in one color, and it's for white people. So if you're a black person, it really doesn't do a whole lot of good for them as for what it's supposed to be. And then I went over to the cereal aisle and I found Aunt Jemima. And this is a caricature of an actual slave who existed and lived. And it's, you can still buy this in this grocery store. this in this grocery store. And then I went and I found Rastus, who's on a cream of wheat. You can still find this in your grocery store. And then I found Uncle Ben. And all of these are symbols of a racist past that we've constructed over 400 years that really benefits people who look like me. And for us to really acknowledge that, it's sort of like an alcoholic acknowledging a problem exists before you can make any kind of, take any steps to kind of remove the construction that has been in place. So I applaud the Board of Education for committing the work that needs to be done to teach our children in this school district about diversity, because I believe that the only way to deconstruct this is through education and awareness. And that's all.
Thank you.
David Malilla, 135 Merer Lane, and I just want to say thank you to the Board of Ed for your leadership and what you have done, and particularly to our Superintendent for being so upfront on this issue, and in spite of some opposition. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rachel Daniels, 55, Talcott Road in Guilford. Hello, Dr. Freeman, Dr. Ballastracy, and Board of Education members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I have four children in Guilford Public Schools, arising eighth, sixth, third, and first grader. Over the span of several weeks, current Guilford residents and former Guilford Public School students signed their name to a petition. It was addressed to our elected officials and signed by 1,178 people. Many of the supporters are here at tonight's meeting, wearing green, and it's wonderful to look out and see a sea of green. I'd like to first read the text of the petition. "We teach our kids to be honest, courageous, and kind. We expect our schools to impart lessons consistent with those values: honesty about who we are, integrity, and how we treat others, and the courage to do what is right. All kids deserve a safe, equitable, and inclusive learning environment. Every student, regardless of race, ethnicity, ability, sexual orientation, gender, identity, or expression, should be provided the opportunity to learn, free from discrimination, fear, or harassment. We support diversity, equity, and inclusion in our schools to ensure that every child's needs are met with well-trained and supported teachers and a curriculum that embraces our differences. We support age-appropriate lessons that improve outcomes for our kids by preparing them for success after high school in a diverse, complex, and multicultural world. Politicians and pundits trying to cancel our history, legislate what teachers say, and mandate outdated and inaccurate lesson plans insist that talking about diversity is divisive. That is a lie designed to deny our children the knowledge that helps us unite across our differences." Along with the 1,178 signatures, we received an incredible number of comments, and would like to take a few minutes to share some of them here tonight. These speak to the support coming from people who represent the many parts of the Guilford community. Parents, grandparents, students, former principals, citizens of Guilford, and previous public servants, all speaking out in support of our Board of Education and their commitment to social justice work in the schools. Just a few of the comments. "Please continue to provide quality education and support equity within our schools. I appreciate all that you do for our kids in our community. Moved to Guilford 13 years ago for the education system and sense of community." Those are parents of students in graduating classes 2015 and 2017. Another. "Grandmother of a current GPS sixth grader and mother of three adults who went through the Guilford school system. I strongly support Dr. Freeman, the Board of Education, and the Social Justice and Inclusion Initiative." Another. "I strongly support this work by the Guilford Board of Education. This is why my family moved here." One more. "Equity in schools means that each student is given accurate and research-based resources to be a successful learner and respectful, knowledgeable citizen in a diverse world. Equity in learning benefits all students. I fully support the work of Superintendent Freeman, the Guilford Board of Education, and the faculty. I applaud their ongoing pursuit of academic excellence for all students." There are more comments to share, but I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak here today. I'm proud to live in a town where my fellow citizens speak up for what is right, and one where our elected officials listen and hear their voices.
And I will note that we have received by email this morning... I see you giving us a paper copy, but we also received that as well. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to be here tonight as well. My name is Christine Ford. I'm at 57 Graves Avenue, and I have a rising second grader at Leet and fifth grader at Baldwin. I graduated from Guilford High School in 1997 and was so proud to be from this wonderful town that I came back to raise my own family here. I felt that I received an amazing education. It's one of the things Guilford is known for, and it was excellent, except for one very critical piece. I graduated without having a full picture of the world. I didn't know the words "Juneteenth," "redlining," "sundown towns." I really thought slavery was something that only happened in the South. I didn't know that not everyone can walk into a store and not be watched carefully, or that when you get pulled over for speeding, you can only worry if your parents find out. All I knew was my own experience. I wasn't pushed to consider how different it might be from others. I want better for my children. They will leave Guilford too one day, and they must be empowered to be self-aware, to understand our complete history and how it still impacts us today, to be empowered to participate in the world and with the people around them, without shame but with eyes wide open. That's one of my biggest wishes for them and their generation. None of them will have real happiness or peace until there is justice, and there won't be justice until there is understanding. I know Guilford has come a long way in the million years since I graduated, and I applaud Dr. Freeman and the whole Board's incredible work and bravery to push us forward. Still, though, there is so much more work to be done to prepare our kids for the future they will inherit." So following Rachel's comments, I'm going to read more comments from the petition. These are from recent alumni and current GHS students. The first one is from a GHS grad from 2003 who signed in support of equity work in Guilford. They write, "We are hoping to move back to town and want our children raised in an inclusive environment that values equity." Another. "I graduated from GHS in 2014 and strongly support this effort. The fact that this effort is getting any pushback at all in our town is proof that it needs to exist in the first place. Keep doing what you are doing, Board of Ed." A GHS graduate from 2020. "In a town and school system that is not majorly diverse, it's especially important to focus on equity and inclusion. With that, there is a high level of privilege and diversity. Inclusive lesson plans can help to combat ignorance." Another. "As a current GHS senior, I hope that the Board of Ed continues to diversify our schools and curricula despite pushback from privileged people who feel that their blissful ignorance is being threatened. We, as students, are meant to be educated about, not shielded from, the reality of history and current events so that we can become culturally aware, critical thinkers. I am a senior at Guilford High School. The allowed curriculum has expanded my knowledge of our nation's history, which includes both the good and the bad. As a student in all AP classes, I can vouch that the Board of Ed has done an excellent job aiding me and other students in our endeavors. This push to whitewash our nation's history is not only disturbing but ethically wrong." I graduated from GHS in 2014. "I wish that there had been more discussion of systemic racism and the inequalities that exist in our community, our country, and our world when I was in GPS. It's the only way to prepare students for the society they will enter as adults. Thank you all for acknowledging that." And then we have some comments from parents and family of students. Here's one from a parent of a GHS class of 2023. "I'm a strong believer in our nation's founding aspiration of justice for all. To fulfill that vision requires an honest and factual reckoning of our history. Don't cancel our past. Teach it, learn from it, and aspire to do better. I strongly support the Board of Ed and Dr. Freeman." Someone else wrote, "My daughters received a first-class education from GPS. They are in the midst of a very positive college experience, in no small part due to their experience here. I trusted their education to the outstanding teachers and administrators, and I have never had any reason for that trust to be questioned. Facts are still facts in Guilford. I have a three-and-a-half and seven-year-old in the Guilford school system, and I think it is vital to include this content as a part of their education. The importance of diversity and the value of appreciating and understanding different backgrounds is something we've always tried to instill in our children. We would applaud a school system that further supported this mission." My kids are graduates of the Guilford school system. I feel like the school system really moved the ball forward with inclusiveness for the special needs community in particular. Although we no longer have kids in the system, I am supportive of efforts to, again, move the ball forward towards historical honesty and racial justice. It's the right thing to do. Dr. Freeman and our incredible Board, thank you for everything that you do, for leading, for listening, for being brave, and for being on the right side of history. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ornella Rulo, my address, 432 Old Whitfield Street here in Guilford. I know you've heard from me before, but I'm here tonight with Mrs. Daniels and Mrs. Ford to share some additional statements from Guilford citizens from the same petition in support of equity and social justice in the Guilford Public Schools. As a resident myself, who chose this town for so many amazing reasons, it is very consistent to me with the community that we are to see the kind of support from both families of GPS students, as well as truly from everyone here, and I thank you so much across the board. These are fellow citizens who want to see children educated in a way that promotes equity and inclusion. So, you know, rather than share just my own personal opinions, I would like to share the following 13 comments representative of the Guilford citizens that were submitted in this petition tonight. First. "Initiatives described in this petition are essential and long overdue. When honest discourse and sincere efforts to examine and reflect upon our history and its legacy are met with reactionary rhetoric, disinformation, and hysteria, it only proves how woefully behind we are in tackling these challenges. Much damage is done when mythology is allowed to supplant history in order to preserve power." Next. "There is a well-funded nationwide campaign to rile up racial anxiety among whites, and I'm simply embarrassed this campaign has found purchase in our town. The fact that there is a backlash against Guilford schools trying to encourage racial equity is proof that the schools' efforts are deeply necessary. Someday, we will get behind this ugliness, partly thanks to efforts like those in our schools." Next. "I support Dr. Freeman and a collaborative civil Board of Ed who has our students' best interests in mind. I support raising citizens who care for their neighbors and think outside of themselves. Thank you, BOE." Next. "Please continue the good work, BOE. We support you. Do not listen to the naysayers. Culturally responsive teaching is the right thing to do." Next. "I have been a resident of Guilford for 43 years and support real truth in education that creates understanding, kindness, compassion, and courage to heal the divisiveness within our community and our country." Next. "I am 70 and moved to Guilford in 2014. As a writer and former teacher, as a mother of three and grandmother of one, I wholeheartedly support this effort to teach actual history in our schools and to promote an open, safe, and honest exchange among students, faculty, and staff." Next. "Equity in schools means that each student is given accurate and research-based resources to be a successful learner and respectful, knowledgeable citizen in a diverse world. Equity in learning benefits all students. I fully support the work of Superintendent Freeman, the Guilford Board of Ed, and the faculty. I applaud their ongoing pursuit of academic excellence for all students." Next. "As a person of faith, equity is paramount to my belief system and basic human interaction. I support our schools' teaching history and preparing our children to foster a kind and just world." Next. "As a retired principal in the Guilford Public Schools and a resident of Guilford, I am appreciative of the excellent leadership of Dr. Freeman and fully support the good work of the Board of Ed members, admin, faculty, staff, as they help students learn and grow into aware, productive, and caring adults." Next. "I fully support the work of the BOE and Dr. Freeman in the ongoing work of honoring diversity in its many forms, recognizing the contributions that all people can make to improving our society and standing up to hate and cowardice. What better lessons can we teach our children?" Next. "How can it be that we need a petition to convince people that teachers should teach the truth? Admitting injustice, admitting that injustice occurs is the only way to prevent it from continuing to happen. Teaching our children equity is teaching our children justice, compassion, kindness, and humanity. It is critical to the survival and thriving of our society." Next. "I wholeheartedly support the Guilford BOE in its courageous and principled stand for equity and inclusion in our public schools, as well as the teaching of our shared American history in all of its well-documented dimensions. And I thank you for listening to the last. I support diversity, equity, and inclusion. I support education that gives students age-appropriate lessons in our history related to these issues. I support ethics, compassion, and responsibility to students related to these issues and all others. I support giving students socially responsible tools and means to achieve diversity, equity, and inclusion." I'll stop. Thank you.
Bill Mazzano, Jefferson Drive. Let me start out by saying I'm pretty good at working with people with opposing viewpoints. My wife probably makes the people with the green shirts look like Reagan Democrats. So my household, I'm constantly in this flux of working things out, and I always try and do that. I have to bring up the caucus, because I think that's important. We just recently had the Republican Caucus. The three...
I'm gonna add...
Please.
No, 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 please, excuse me. No, no, no. I just want to make clear to everyone that this is a Board of Education meeting, and if you would like to...
These are board members.
Excuse me, I'm really sorry to interrupt, but I just want to make clear so that everyone is aware, this is a Board of Education meeting, and everyone, and anyone is welcome to comment on Board of Education matters.
It is.
We are not going to be talking, and this is not a place to bring up election matters or campaign matters.
I'm sorry, but this is a Board of Education matter.
Okay.
All right?
If it is...
It is.
Excuse me, yes, but please, I'm just asking for respect that...
So am I.
Mr. Mazzano, I'm going to ask you to just let me finish. I just want to make sure that everyone is clear, so everyone has the same understanding, that this is a place where you can bring Board of Education matters but not election or campaign matters. Thank you. I'm sorry to have interrupted.
I don't see what everybody's so afraid of. The three were defeated, resoundingly. However, the three-headed Hydra raised its head. I'll name the names. Mr. Bishop, Mr. Hartman, Mr. Dudley, and Mr. Galeno jumped right through the hoop as soon as they asked.
Mr. Mazzano, I'm going to, again, ask you to stick to Board of Education matters, Guilford Public School matters.
You're talking about Board of Ed candidates.
I know you are asking, you are talking about election and campaign matters, and I am going to respectfully ask you to refrain from discussing those. This is a Board of Education meeting, and we welcome...
It's important that the town knows we'll have to beat them three times now.
This is not the place for that discussion. This is a place for discussing Board of Education and Guilford Public School... This is a place for discussing Board of Education and Guilford Public School content matters.
So, we'll go to that. I'll go around the board. I'll start with Mr. Freeman. Mr. Freeman, I know you bought six, or that what, used $6,000 to buy copies of How to Be an Anti-Racist. I've read the book. Yes. I'm familiar with it. I'm just wondering, it's a quick question, won't take research. Do you agree with Mr. Kendy that capitalism is racist? That is in the book.
This is ridiculous.
This is, this is, okay.
He bought it for the school staff. Why is that not an appropriate question for the Board of Ed?
Mr. Mizono, I just have to interrupt you. I think that Dr. Balastresi...
You didn't even read the book. I asked you.
Excuse me, if you could let me finish, please. Dr. Balastresi started the public comments section that we would be listening to comments. We're not gonna be taking direct questions or answering direct questions at the meeting.
It's important. Why don't we have a right to answer? It's an easy question.
The forum clearly says it's comments. It's not a question and answer.
Listen, obviously, you didn't read it. You told me you didn't. So did you, Mr. Sands.
Well, I have subsequently read it.
Oh, you have? Good.
Yes.
I'm glad, because we asked you for a long time to. I could ask you the same question, but I suppose I'm not allowed to do that either. Because you don't feel, any of you, we've emailed you, we've emailed you a bunch of times, you're... I won't use the word, I'll try and be polite.
Oh, my God.
You never...
Try harder.
Yeah, I can, it's hard. It's all the green, that's like...
Guilford green.
Guilford green. Listen, I get it. I am conservative, and I am vastly outnumbered. Here's the thing, okay? Maybe you can all agree on this, you can shout me down, you can dislike me. I have no dislike for anybody. You can think whatever you want. If you want to teach your kids...
Folks, let's all show civility here, okay, everybody?
Please.
Yeah, we can't really have comments from the audience, okay? Just out of respect to the speaker.
I expected to be attacked, actually, because that's what happens when you have a differing opinion. But I'm all about it. Here's the thing. When it comes to issues about morality, that is the job of a parent. Teach your kids whatever you want to teach them. Let me teach my kids in the way I see fit. It is not the job of a public school to take away my right to do that in the way I see fit. I am not begrudging anyone in here wearing your Guilford green. I don't have your hand up. I'm not, like, gonna call on you.
Your hand's not up.
But I don't get it. This is what's so confusing to me. Why can't someone respect my right to teach my kids the way I see fit with moral issues? I don't send them to school to get morality. I do that myself. I take them to church. That's where they get those values. Not from a teacher, not from somebody, an administrator who has an agenda. "Mr. Freeman, I'm glad you got your contract, I really am, but I don't honestly expect to see you in more than a couple of years. I think you have higher aspirations. Guilford's kind of too small for you. You have too much talent, and you're a good talker, so I don't see you around very much."
Mr. Mizono, I'm not gonna sit here and tolerate you talking down to our administrators or anyone here on the board. So, if you have content...
Well, I could learn very well from you how to do it.
If you have content to comment on...
Your time's up. It's time to move on.
Then feel free, otherwise I'm gonna ask you to finish your comments.
I will finish. Can you just tell me why I don't have the right to teach my child the way I see fit?
You are...
Why the school thinks they have to take it upon their shoulders? Is that a, is that a simple question? Why can't that be answered?
So, tell me comments.
See, I don't get any advice from the peanut gallery out there. But you guys won't tell me anything.
Mr. Mizono, we have a question and answers on the website for some of the questions that people may have about the work that's being done in the public schools. We have talked about it at a number of Board of Ed meetings and will continue to talk about it. People who have specific questions about this work, please reach out to us. We are more than willing to answer those questions.
I do. I get no answers from anyone.
Mr. Mizono, I am, I'm happy to give you some of these answers. I am gonna ask you to finish your comments for this evening so that other people can get up and speak.
Okay.
Is there anyone else who would like to present to the board?
Hi, my name is Nuria Miller. I live at 1131 Little Mallow Road, and as Mr. Freeman knows, we'll be here forever. Not tonight, I mean, like, me and my family. We have a longstanding relationship. We'll be here forever because I have a three-year-old that still has to go through, how many years? Eighteen? I don't know, fifteen more years, I'll be here. And I'm really sorry about what just happened. I just wanna say that going to what we're talking about, teaching our kids, I'm, as a parent, I love my kids, but I don't think I spend 24 hours with them to be able to teach them anything. I think that my kids spend about eight hours in your hands, and I don't think that you're doing anything wrong with teaching my kids about history. My daughter, who was in eighth grade last year, had an amazing, what's it, social studies class where she was able to learn about slavery that happened in our town, and I think that is important for her to know. Me, myself, I know you look at me, and if I don't speak and I don't say anything, you think I'm white, but then I open my mouth and I have, like, this huge accent. I know I'm not African-American or black or anything like that, but I feel like racism and history has to be, and diversity has to be teaching the kids about everything. It cannot just be talking to the kids. I think we're focusing right now on the African-American community, but I feel like we also need to focus on the, all the other races. I feel like I'm outnumbered all the time when I'm here because I know I'm, I'm a, I said Latina, but now that is not politically correct. We need to say Latinx, and people, so people don't get offended, and all these politically correct things that we need to do. So, I always feel outnumbered because I know in our town there aren't that many Latinos. Probably, I know most of them because maybe there's, like, 12 to 15 families, or maybe there's more that I haven't gotten yet to know, to meet, but I feel like there's also, like, kids try to be funny, and sometime adults try to be funny, and they think that comments that they make to you are funny, and sometimes they really aren't. Sometimes you just, like, let them think that they are being funny so they don't hurt you, but some of the things that people can say to you are really hurtful. So, I don't think that there's anything wrong with teaching our kids about history. And I actually didn't came to talk about that. I just got really upset about what happened, and I just wanted to let you know that I feel like the eight hours that you are with our kids, I would appreciate it if you teach my kids to be kind and respectful to others, and you teach them about history, and we teach them where we come from, and all the things that you do for them. In my house, our motto is we need to be respectful of everybody, like, you don't need to be friends with everybody, but you need to be respectful with everybody, and that's the way that we live. Like, I know my kids don't like some kids, and I said you don't need to be friends with them, just respect them. That's how we live. And I'm probably going past my four minutes or something. But the one thing that I wanted to ask that has nothing to do with the wearing green is, for the kids, I'm gonna be one of those parents that want the Cohort C back, because I don't feel like, we are all vaccinated in my house, and I feel like until we don't have vaccinations for the little kids, I would really appreciate if we can think more about it. I don't, I know that it's not going to be a recommendation, but I don't know if that's something that we can talk about for other kids. I am afraid of my kids getting sick, and I know some parents would say, "Well, it's just like a little cold, and it's just gonna be like this and something like that, and they're gonna be sick for a couple of days, and then it's gonna be gone." And for a lot of kids, it is like that, but for a lot of kids, it isn't, and you really don't know how bad this virus is gonna hit your kids, and I am afraid for the consequences of the future of what might happen to my kids if they get infected. And I was wondering if we don't have the Cohort C, I don't know if the school gives, like, the stipend for each kid back to the family so that we can provide them a tutor or do something at home if we're not gonna have the Cohort C, or anything like that. I know there's other towns and other states that do that, like, if you don't want to send your kid to public school for whatever reason, they will give you the stipend for the kid, and then you can use that money as you see fit.
Dr. Balastresi, the tape has just ended. Nuria, I'm sorry, the tape for GCTV has just ended. We need to replace the tape.
Do I need to repeat everything?
No, you do not. But I wanted to stop you before you kept going while we replaced the tape.